I'd like to call the meeting to order. We're reconvening. We were in an earlier executive session to discuss the hiring of a superintendent. Could we please say the pledge?
A pledge.
A pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, welcome, everybody. We're going to start with public comment. I have a public comment that was submitted by Gabrielle Harrington, the president of the LVSEA, so I will read it to everyone. "Good evening, President Misselli, Vice President Steele, Superintendent Dolan, Locust Valley School Board Trustees, and the rest of our school community. We hope that this statement finds you and your families in good health. We thank the board for your leadership during this time and appreciate your kind words of support. This pandemic is terrible. We are seeing its effects on our school community. We mourn the losses of our friends, parents, and community members. We pray for their families. We pray for the community members who are still struggling to get well. We pray that no one else will become ill. We miss being in the school buildings with our students. We have begun our fifth week of teaching and learning from home and are beginning to hit our stride. We congratulate the parents who have partnered with us. We thank them for their patience, ingenuity, and sense of humor. Many of us have school-aged children at home, and we understand the difficulties that home learning can generate, especially with many different schedules and the need for supervision. We wish that we were with the students, but we are thankful for the technology that has allowed us to continue to virtually teach. We have learned many programs and are beginning to be able to create lessons more than one day before presentation to the students. We realize that virtual is not as good as real, and that this is a learning process for all involved. We miss being able to see the expressions on our students' faces. We miss being able to look at and help with their papers while they are working at their desks. We miss having the time to interact with them in many ways that cannot be recreated through the Chromebook. Meanwhile, we will continue to be successful because all of the district stakeholders, administration, teachers, counselors, all of the support staff, parents, and students, are working together in creative new ways. We are thankful for this community. Please contact the teachers or counselors if you need clarification, support, or an adjusted plan for your child. We are here and we are listening. Our students' needs are very important to us. We look forward to being in the school buildings again. We pray that it will be soon. On behalf of the Locust Valley School Employees Association, I wish you safety and good health. Gabby." Okay, that was the only public comment I had. Were there any others submitted that I'm unaware of?
There are three others that I have, which I will report on now. This is Tom. Hello, everybody. Welcome to the public. I have a public comment that was a question that was submitted by Mr. Frank Burrito. I'm going to read it now, and later when we discuss the new grading policy that's being proposed, I will refer it again to Mr. Davidson. The question is, "Can you provide assurances that the first three-quarter grades the children achieved will be counted numerically toward their GPA and transcripts? Understanding pass/fail is on the table for quarter four. Given the extraordinary circumstances, it would be criminal to send a message the efforts and sacrifices they put forth previously would be just wiped out." I'm going to refer that to Mr. Davidson later on, and I think everybody will be very pleased with the answer. Second, a comment from Natika Moran, and it reads as follows, "I hope you are well. I wanted to provide my feedback regarding grading. I feel as though the teachers must contact the child and then the parents three times, documented via all methods, email, text, and phone if there is a child who is not doing work or who is in danger of failing. Thanks so much, Natika." That one, again, when we get to the section on the grading policy, I'll refer back to that. And then finally, I have one from Lori Manise that reads as follows, different topic. "Dear Board of Education Trustees, a question has been raised for members of the Coordinated Parents Council regarding suspension of policy 2410 during tonight's Board of Education meeting. Please see below. Question: If there is a temporary suspension of policy 242410 to allow for an immediate vote on the proposal for grading in secondary schools, when will policy 2410 be reinstated? Thank you, Lori Suther and Natika Moran." Briefly, I'll answer that now, and that is that the policy would only be waived for tonight and only for this action. As soon as this meeting is over, that policy will be back in effect. When we get to that, I'm on the agenda. I'm going to repeat that and explain it in a little bit greater detail, but rest assured, the policy is being suspended. It's being recommended to be suspended only for the purpose of this one policy that we're looking at tonight, and I'll come back to that later on. That's all I have on public comment. Then I'll provide copies of those to Susan for the minutes.
Okay, great. So we'll go to reports to the board, and I will turn it back to you, Dr. Dolan.
Thank you very much, Jen. So my report, all over the place. These are certainly unusual times. Welcome to this very unusual board meeting. We have done all we could to ensure everybody's access and even participation. I certainly hope, like all of you, that we get back to normal before the year is over. Couple of quick reports. Our remote learning program continues, and we will be meeting tomorrow to begin to assess and discuss enhancements as needed. I do want to echo Gabby's words, and I appreciated her letter that we got today. If parents do have concerns, please let us know. We are not in your the issues that parents might be having. Please contact teachers directly if you can. If not, principals. I know we're all working very hard, and we're trying to turn around questions very quickly that we receive from parents. So still a work in progress. We've certainly met with some success, but we're not going to rest until we're convinced that everybody's receiving what they would hope to receive. Our food program continues, and childcare continues to be available to first responders as well. If you need information on either of those programs, they both still appear on the district website. Specifically, the childcare program appears with locations and times and how people can access that. Tonight on the board meeting, I have recommended to the board an agreement with Scope. They are the organization who are providing us with that childcare. And just a quick commercial, they're a wonderful organization. George Duffy is their leader. They've done a great job, and I really appreciate that they've pulled together, I think, something like 53 of the 56 Nassau school districts in a program that will provide childcare, something that I'm not certain that we would have been able to do on our own. Great organization. I give them a lot of credit. As everyone knows by now, New York State schools remain closed until at least May 15th. We heard today from the governor again that he is exploring the possibility of regional openings. I'm going to surmise that if there were regional openings, we would not be a region that he would be looking at, given the surplus of cases here on Long Island. So that May 15th is for now date. I think we will hear more from the governor before the year is over. And sadly, we learned today that Section 8 has canceled the spring sports season. That just happened at about 4 o'clock today. A lot of discussion. Section 8 and Section 11 chose to act together. They are both canceling the spring sports season. That's very unfortunate. I know lots of kids go to school to go play sports, and it's what keeps them going, so this was not done lightly, and we'll be sharing that information as we can through the high school. Next, I participated this morning in a great meeting that was hosted and facilitated really well by Patrick DiClemente, not only in terms of getting people to participate, but also just the way that Patrick handled these very difficult remote meetings. These are really hard to do, as I think we're all learning. Patrick did a great job in facilitating a discussion about senior year events. We've got a lot of senior year events that are still on the calendar. Most of them after May 15th, some before. But the ones that are after May 15th, things like prom and graduation, award ceremony, we need to figure out what we're going to do about those. And Patrick wanted to entertain a conversation today with stakeholders, parents, and kids. And the kids went first, and they had some very strong opinions and were very helpful. It also mentioned the two senior class advisors were both involved in it. I appreciate having both of them there. Good conversation. We've rescheduled another one for next week, and we'll follow up. I'll give an update to the board on Thursday in the board grant. And finally, just to make believe that things are normal, happy librarian week to all of our school librarians. This is school librarian week? Actually, I think it's all librarian week. Happy librarian week to all of our school librarians, many of whom still are providing valuable resources to our community. And when we're not in pandemic mode, I know that they are incredibly important and valued members of our school community. So that's it. Thank you very much. Thanks for your attention.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move to board reports. And I will start with the audit committee and Margaret. Margaret's Margaret's on mute. All right, Margaret, I'm going to skip you, and then maybe your tech will work out. Are you there?
I just checked. I'm showing her is still in the meeting, but I agree, Jen, it shows mute for her name.
Yes. You know, I'll move forward and circle back to you, Margaret, okay? Because you're frozen there. Budget and Finance Committee, John?
No, no report at this time.
Okay. Facilities, Brian?
I'm so sorry. We have not had a meeting since our last, and we will do that. I know I've been speaking with Dr. Dolan, but no report at this time either.
Okay. Policy. We are discussing the grading policy this evening, but other than that, we have not had a meeting. Same with professional development and board training. Public Relations, Sean?
Yes, nothing really to report, except we're trying to have our next meeting tomorrow at some point in the afternoon.
Margaret, are you back with us? Oh, now I can hear you. Nope, there you are. Can you give us your audit report? I don't Okay.
It appears to be freezing out.
Yeah. I know that the audit committee was going to meet today, and we have postponed the meeting. Tony, do you have a new date for that yet, or are we still waiting?
We're going to try to do it on May 5th at the next board meeting.
Okay. All right, so hopefully Margaret will figure her tech out, but I think that was the extent of the report. So we will move on to unfinished business, where we have a discussion of the public hearing on Smart School Bond Act Investment Plan.
And I've got that.
Okay.
I asked Mr. Packard, who I've started to call our Smart Bond Czar, and he's certainly done a very good job the last few weeks of pulling together information to submit a report of the status of our smart bond. And it reads as follows, "Dr. Dolan, at the March 17th board meeting, we presented a draft Smart Bond Preliminary Investment Plan. We posted a copy of the plan on the website with an address to submit comments. We received no comments and therefore have not made any changes. We have been allocated $386,964 by New York State Education Department to improve our technology and security infrastructure. We are proposing to spend a total of $279,933 of the smart bond allocation, $176,068 on Wi-Fi access points and firewalls, and another $103,865 on an entry control system. That is consistent with what was described to the board at the last meeting. Our next step is to have a final vote at the next board meeting, and with the board's permission, I will place it on the agenda for May 5th. Once the board votes on that, we can then submit to the state, and we will have met my self-imposed goal of getting this done before the school year is over with six weeks to spare. So hopefully, we can get that done, and we can lay claim to this money. Given the state's finances, it is a great question to say, you know, how secure is this money? As I understand it, it is supported by a bond. That is, the people of the state of New York voted on a bond and allocated this money, and therefore, the money is somewhat sacrosanct. It can't be utilized for other purposes. So the money is still there. We just have to claim ours. It will not be immediate, and we are still not entirely certain. We're pretty sure there's going to be on the basis of a reimbursable, but we're prepared to start to spend the money such that we can get the money back. And the projects we're spending on are certainly worthwhile. So that'll be on the May 5th agenda for a vote.
Okay, great. I think Margaret has dialed in, so she's able to hear us. It's just her face is frozen on the screen, but she's able to hear us. Okay. So we will move to new business. We have a discussion on the budget update.
And I'm going to start that. I'm sorry to be monopolizing so much of the conversation tonight. But this piece, Tony and I are going to split. We're going to split it in unfair fashion. I'm going to give all the bad news. Tony's going to get to give what we perceive to be the good news about where we are with the budget. And the bad news is simply the amount of confusion that abounds about this year's budget. We're very uncertain of a lot of things. For example, we do not know the date of the budget vote, except that it will be on or after June 1st. We do not know when posting and mailing requirements are going to be, but we need to be ready to do those a certain number of days. I believe it's 24 before the budget vote. We don't know how the election of board trustees will be run. We don't know if there will be a new requirement regarding absentee ballots. We do not know the capacity of the Board of Elections to support these efforts. Those are among the unknowns. Added to that are some more bad news that we've heard as recently as this weekend. Just this weekend, we heard that there will likely be some pretty severe cuts to state aid. We've already received one cut of $100,000 that we believe that we can absorb, but this weekend, Sunday, and I sent this to the board on Sunday or Sunday night, we were advised that the governor was talking about a 50% reduction in foundation aid. Now, today, we heard 20%. We're going to take the 20. If it's a multiple choice question, we're going to take the 20. But we don't know what that number is going to be. But I think it's pretty clear there are going to be cuts in state aid. So what would that mean? If 20% of our foundation aid were cut, that would be a $750,000 reduction in revenue. If it were 50%, we're talking about a $1.8 million reduction in revenue. It would be impossible to absorb either one of those entirely. So the plan is this. Both would be a problem, but what we'd like to do is kind of a menu approach. And on May 5th, when we meet with the board, we'll report back to the board the results of our conversations, the administration's conversations of next week, where we'll lay out possibilities of areas that could be reduced and, have to say it, possible reductions. It would be a high compliment indeed if we were able to maintain everything in our budget and not lose anything. That's going to be very difficult were we to lose $1.8 million. I think then we would be talking about finding reductions and finding some savings. But we will give all those to the board. We're going to work on those next week. I only hope that we know the number sooner rather than later, and I hope that we know the number with enough time that we'll be able to prepare a budget with those numbers in mind. That is, we can't find out two days before we have to post our budget that we've lost $1.8 million. We need a little bit of time to get our wits about us and figure out what we're going to do. But the good news is that we are in good shape right now. I know that might sound pretty silly, given what I just said, but the fact is, even in the midst of the pandemic, even in the midst of the closing, we've been working really, really hard. It's not it's kind of fortuitous that tomorrow is Administrative Professional Day. And we've got a lot of administrative professionals who have done just yeoman's work in terms of getting payroll out, in terms of getting accounts paid. All our bills are paid. I was in the central office today, and there were quite a few people there getting their work done. We've got a great, great support staff that have been able to keep the ball rolling and keep the fiscal ball rolling. Normally, I'd be turning this whole conversation very confidently and very comfortably to Tony because of the work that she and her whole staff does on preparing our budget. And I am going to turn it over to Tony now so that the board and the community can hear where we are with the budget at this moment in time. Given this frozen moment, where are we? What are the numbers? And then we can certainly entertain any questions that the board might have.
Hi, everyone. Right now, the budget that we are proposing has a proposed tax levy increase of 1.95%. Our maximum allowable tax levy increase is 2.62%. And the board, you know, gave us indications that they wanted to come in at a lower amount than we were allowed, and that's what we have proposed. Our budget-to-budget increase now stands at 1.73%. That is lower than the tax levy increase because we do have some other miscellaneous revenues that are coming in lower than last year. Regarding the state aid cuts, my colleagues, people seem to think that we're going to get a new number on May 1st from the governor. So hopefully, we will get something more definitive on May 1st. And then, as Tom said, we'll do what we have to do to meet the number that we're anticipating with that new information.
Any questions for Tony or for Tom on the budget? Anyone? No? Margaret, do you have any questions? No? Okay, thank you, Tony. All right, we will move to the temporary suspension of policy 2410. Dr. Dolan, do you want to?
Thank you. I'll be happy to. No, I won't be happy to, because this is certainly unusual circumstance. This is not something I would normally recommend. Because we're doing remote learning, because we're closed, we need to amend, we need to change our grading policy. I can tell you that every district in Nassau County is having this conversation. We've had great conversations with our comparator school districts on what they're doing. We're all right around the same neighborhood, I have to be honest, with little variations. I think we've got a really good one that Anthony's come up with that will incentivize students just a little bit more than most places, and I'll let him talk about that. But here's the important point I need to make. In a few minutes, I'll be asking the board to entertain a motion to suspend the policy. Normally, policies must be read twice before they can be enacted. I'm asking the board to consider, because of the urgency of time, to enact this policy after one reading. After tonight, Board Policy 2410 is back in effect. And in fact, if there were another policy we were looking at tonight, there's not. But if there were, it would be in effect for that policy. This is a very focused request of the board to suspend the policy for this night, for this policy only. And given how verbose I'm being, even more than usual, I recognize that it's important. We're certainly not looking to disenfranchise anybody. The method that we employed with this by putting it out a little later than I had wanted, but it was out by yesterday, and we've given people a chance to weigh in, and we did get a couple of questions on it. Got a few other emails about it. Either Anthony or I answered every one of those. I know Anthony had a long conversation with a parent today, so we're looking to be as transparent as we can, but in a few minutes, I will be asking the board to suspend this policy, not something I anticipate ever doing again.
Are there any questions about the temporary suspension of the policy 2410 or any discussion about that item? No? Okay, then we'll move to the proposed grading policy, recommendations for grading in secondary schools. Back to you, Dr. D.
Yeah, I'll be very short this time. Anthony is the maven on this topic. He's worked very hard with administrators. I've been lucky to be able to participate in those conversations, but he certainly understands this to a degree that is going to make a discussion of it, an explanation of it, way better than I would. So I'm going to turn it over to Anthony and ask him to discuss the policy, and then we'll entertain questions about it.
Maven. I'm going to have to write that one down. Please put that in my due evaluation. But thank you.
Yeah, we missed mid-year, buddy.
To talk a bit about the policy, and I really can't take the credit for it. It really was a collaborative effort. There, when school went out, it was one of the first discussions that popped up all over Long Island and throughout New York State is what would we do if there were extended closure relative to grading policies and practices? And we did not want to be expedited in making a decision because we didn't want to just make a quick decision and one that could potentially hurt children and impact them. So one of the first questions that comes up is why are we talking about secondary and not elementary? And I just wanted to talk to that point. For one, elementary does not have the stakes that a secondary profile does. If you look at grades, we have students who are on the precipice of graduation, so there are graduation requirements. We have students that are looking, and they're going to enter college process over the next year or so. So the impact and the gravity of their grades certainly very different than those in the elementary. The elementary also has trimesters. They don't have quarters. So we really only had one trimester left, and that would be the end of the year. So we have some time to discuss with elementary whether or not we're going to do standard space, which we normally do, or because of the disruption, to go towards a narrative where we have more personalized account and discussion about each individual's child. So that's still on the table. It just doesn't have the urgency that when we're looking at students who, two months from now, will be graduating, that we do really need to come up with this. We've moved fast and slow, as fast as we could, but slow enough to make sure that we took every factor into consideration. So the request for the change in policy really emanates from these unusual unprecedented circumstances, for one. And we really kind of thought about what do we seek to do here? We want to make sure that we're compassionate. We want to make sure that we do no harm towards students. We also want to try to the best and the extent possible to keep the grades consistent with the Locust Valley education so that there's not undue inflation or deflation of grades. And then we also had to take into account the consideration of equity. We have students who have unbelievable hardship in their homes right now. There's illness, there's economic hardship, there's loss of life. So we have to recognize, and they don't all have the same support system. So we also don't want to have a greater chasm between those students who do have the support and those who do not, because this is not the way that school is designed, to be purely remote learning. And one of the things I've said is that we could probably replace a good deal of the content digitally. You cannot replace the social, emotional intervention and support that you get from having a classroom teacher and to be able to give students all that they need. So the remote learning certainly, it does not provide for that. So we factored in all of these considerations. So where are we? Our current policy calls that for all regions and grades that have an exam after the fourth quarter, final exam, each marking quarter is 20% of the overall grade, and then the 20% is reserved for the regions or the final exam. If, of course, doesn't have a region or a final exam, then it's 25% a quarter. So either way, it equates to 100. When we look at this, we had two quarters, so quarter one and quarter two, that really normally would count as 20%. And then we had six out of eight and a half weeks into quarter three. And we know that that six weeks worth of work is valid, it's reliable, it's consistent with the work that was done for the majority of the year. And we didn't want to dismiss that, so I think that speaks to one of the questions that Dr. Dolan had from public, whether or not we would throw out that work. And that's certainly not our intention at all. But in the same respect, we recognize that it's an incomplete quarter. And then we immediately went into remote learning, which took a learning curve for everyone, for teachers, for students, for parents alike. So our consideration was looking at, if we're looking at being out possibly for the rest of the year, and we really don't know that. As you see, the finish line keeps being moved. We do have to come up with a framework and even a target for how we're going to assess and what would be the cutoffs and the times that we would assess. So when we looked at this, we did not want to inflate quarterly averages, but we also knew we had to redistribute the 100%. So we look at that as quarter one and quarter two being 30%. Now, where it changes is in quarter three, we have six out of eight and a half weeks. We would extend quarter three to May 4th. What that would mean is we took that first weeks of work, six weeks of work. Remote learning would be used only to the degree that it would assist and help a student, so the do not harm would come into factor there. It would also allow, it also has and will continue to allow the time for students who may have missed work to make up some of that work. For teachers to be able to work with students, students work with teachers, to find out if there are any gaps so that we can make sure that anything that is derived is consistent with a student's growth and progress throughout the year. And also keeping in mind that remote learning for a period of time, when we look at assessments, the assessments are not the same. They're vastly different. The integrity of the assessments outside are going to be compromised when you're working within a remote learning atmosphere in certain disciplines. So when we look So when we looked at that, we said, you know what? We do have quite enough to be able to come up with a grade in quarter three, a fair one, and to give everyone time. Should this policy go forward tonight? Means that we have a cup, we have about two weeks in order to solidify everything and give every student the best opportunity possible. So then we looked toward what would a fourth quarter be? And with the cutoff point being May 4th, we don't know how, you know, we don't know if we'd be back in school May 16th, very unlikely. And then what that would look like. So it would be disrupted. More than likely, we will be out beyond May 15th. So, and also, we don't know when the school year would end. Because breaks were waived, there's a potential that the school year would be called earlier than its normal date of June 26th. So we're hitting a moving target. The assessments may not be as valid and reliable and consistent with the work and the expectations that we've had. There are no more regents exams, there are no, the AP and IB exams have been changed. So our looking at that was to say, from May 4th on, we would tabulate a grade of pass/fail. And one of the concerns with that is, well, what about accountability? So we have to weigh accountability against, against equity. So what we looked at is being fair and to give a degree of incentive was, with the pass/fail, the fail would be a 60. It would not be punitive, we would not look to plunge a student's grade into a zero or a 20 for that matter. And the flip side of that would be for the student who continues to do well, we would take 10% of that grade, so the 10% weighting would replicate the student's best quarter. So if that were quarter two, by all intents and purposes, quarter one would be 30%, quarter three would be 30%, now quarter two becomes 40% because that 10% is now reflective of the student's best quarter. And we believe that that would fairly represent a student's growth and progress during these unusual times. I also, you know, Ms. Villa's here, so she can talk a little bit too. I think that some of the concerns that come up is what about colleges? Are they going to care? What if we do something different in other districts? There are some districts that are going past fail for half the year, possibly, but no one's come real out with that. I don't believe they've announced that. Others are coming up with a numeric grade for quarters three and four, which we're highly uncomfortable with doing. But Ms. Villa, if you can talk a little bit about college, appreciate it.
Sure. Thank you. Everybody, you can hear me? Good. So yeah, the, the majority of our students really benefit from our grading policy, particularly from our weighting policy. And we, as Mr. Davidson said, we looked at the numbers in a lot of different ways, and the way that this calculation comes out, it really showed us that the final grade that students would receive is a great indicator of how they would have done if we were continue, if we had continued our instruction in school in the same way that we always had. So if we did move to a pass/fail for quarter four, one of the concerns that came up was the college implications on how they would view that. And an important consideration to that is that colleges receive a final grade on a student's transcript. So for our seniors and for our juniors, who are very close in this process to either submitting a final transcript or in the fall submitting a college application, the grade that would be on their transcript for their courses that they're taking right now will still be a numerical grade that when calculated and when factored and when looked at really was a good indicator into how they were currently performing and how they were expected to perform by the end of the year. So that really is the college implication to that. And with all of that being said, colleges from the most highly selective, all the way down to our local colleges, have come out very strongly and confidently saying that the most important thing to them is that we communicate what our policy was on the school profile, on a student's transcript, and that students will not be penalized for the, the policy that the school district adopted. And just the most important thing is for them to know what that policy was and what that looked like. And so we've, you know, kind of taken care of that by making sure that it's going to be on the profile and on the transcript. Thank you.
Yeah, I think if you have any questions, we're certainly open to field them.
Questions from the board? Anyone? No? Sean, Brian? Margaret, do you have a question? Because you're frozen, so I don't know.
No, Jen, I don't.
Okay. Thank you. I have a question. How will the parents be alerted if the students are missing work? And likewise, if they are in that last quarter and in danger of failing, at what point do the parents get a phone call or an email? Or how, how are the families alerted that their child is struggling?
I don't foresee it being anything dissimilar to what we currently do. You know, as of right now, because of the remote learning, teachers are doing a great deal of outreach. One of the things we actually are working on as of today, actually, hello, Dr. Zito? Hello? One of the things we're working on right now is actually trying to target students who are in danger of failure for the year. So we're looking at quarter one and quarter two grades to try to ascertain if there are students who are at risk. So we're doing that throughout the entire program, working with all the coordinators, directors, who in turn are working with the teachers, so that we cannot, so we're not getting into June and making these decisions, we're trying to anticipate now. We'll continue to track all of those students in May. And so if the May 4th deadline is indeed the deadline, and we, we enter grade shortly thereafter, we'll have a very close, we'll have a very good approximation of where students do stand. Again, when we still have time, if you have a student who is in jeopardy, we do have another month or so where we can start to fill in the gaps and really work closely with them in order to make sure that we, we, we help all students to be successful. So the processes are already in place, we're working towards that, and we want to make sure that we do everything that we can. And even ascertain, look, every student who's enrolled in a regents course right now has passed a regents exam. That is, and that was the, the directive of New York State, which is beneficial to some in the same respect, they still need to pass the course. So we're also monitoring to see if there's even summer supports that we may have to give for certain students, because we don't, you know, we do not want to leave any child in alert and, and really struggling as we get into summer.
Just a quick follow-up. So like, say a child is missing one assignment, two assignments, three assignments, like, if they're, if they're missing assignments, is there a standard that we're following that a phone call would go home or an email?
No. Ms. Villa, you want to talk about the practice within the high school or Mr. DiClemente?
I, I can actually talk about. I have had constant communication with many teachers about missed assignments. They are on their game, and they continually call and let me know when the student is not giving their work in.
Is that any of the teachers?
Michelle, is it, did you want, or?
Yeah, I was watching, I was watching Mr. DiClemente. I don't.
So I feel, I feel that we have a structure in place, and I think everyone should know this, where there's multiple layers of support. So we, we do have an ongoing, we have an ongoing communication with the entire staff. So we have, we've had a few staff meetings, we set them up on different days and through those, so that people have options and are able to attend to their classes and also join the staff meetings. One of the pieces that we feel strongly about is providing different ways to respond to students who are not maybe as attentive as they could be or who are struggling. So the, the line of communication really is that we're asking teachers to reach out to parents, to students, and then parents through phone calls or emails or digital platform. That's the first kind of, that's the initial response. If things continue to worsen or don't improve, the next step is for the teacher to reach out to the student's counselor. The counselor will do some looking into the matter and say, is this a situation that is just specific to one course or is it across multiple courses? If it's just specific to one subject area, then the counselor will reach out to, let's say it's social studies, they would reach out to Mr. Serendia. If it's multiple courses, the counselor will reach out to a building administrator. So for instance, Jen Massa is the lead for the ninth grade, Lisa Trunetsky is the lead for the 10th grade, Michelle for the 11th grade, myself for the 12th grade. So the initial response is the teacher to parent, the secondary response is the teacher to counselor, and counselor to the building administrator. If things still don't continue, the administrator with the teacher, with the counselor will troubleshoot the situation and look to provide a level of support. And we've come across multiple issues. So the issue with the student, some issues are just, it's easier to drift away and not attend to schoolwork, and they need, students may need just to be, you know, motivated a little bit. Other issues have to do with technology matters. A third piece, a third kind of issue that will come in across is a student who is just overwhelmed because they're taking care of younger brothers or sisters because mom and dad are sick or have been called to work and support medically. So there are major, you know, there's a variety of issues that are really being put into play, but I think just to go back to the root question, how are we supporting students who are at risk in different ways? Is the level of communication there? Absolutely. I think in some ways, we actually, in some ways, there's more communication than there has been in the past because we're trying to make up for that face-to-face contact that's not there every day when the student might walk into a classroom. So I feel good about it. I do think that, like Mr. Davidson had mentioned, just over the last few days, what we've asked is to really, let's get a check on every student and where they are first, second, and third quarter. So we have multiple lists going on in different platforms, so the communication pieces, I do feel confident that they are in play.
Thank you so much. I think it's amazing how well everybody's coordinating and working together from all different locations. There any other questions?
Hey, guys, I just wanted, I just wanted to say hello. Sorry I'm late, I'm just getting out of work, I'm driving home, if you guys can tell.
Okay.
Welcome, Dr. D. What are you doing? Thank you, thank you, I appreciate it. But I, I wanted to, I, I've been kind of, kind of not really getting involved in much of the stuff, and I wanted to thank everybody for pulling my weight too. I really appreciate it.
Well, thanks for everything that you're doing.
Thank you. I, I appreciate it. And now I'm going to concentrate on the road.
Okay.
If I get interrupted for one minute, Jen, I apologize.
Sure.
If anybody did, I hope people got a chance to see it. Pam Kaplan came up with the idea of honoring some of our local heroes. And I know there was a first responder who was honored yesterday, a parent in the district. And today, on Facebook, I saw two other heroes who were honored, who happen to be members of this Board of Education. Joe Zito, who is doing a lot of work in the medical field, and of course, our Brian, Chief Brian Nolan, who's doing work with the fire department. Boy, people have a lot of balls up in the air, and those are two that you guys can't drop, and you haven't, and we really appreciate it. So it was our honor, it was our privilege to honor you in that way, and I give Pam all the credit for thinking of it. Good job, guys.
Thank you. Thank you very much. It was, it was really, really heartwarming. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
This is a weird segue. Sorry. Thank you, guys. Okay, so are there, if there are no other questions, we'll, we'll move to the motion to temporarily suspend policy 2410. Are there any other questions? So can I entertain a motion to suspend policy 2410?
Motion. Sean.
Sean Steele makes a motion, a second.
Second.
Second, by Brian Nolan. All in favor? I'll just go down the line. Margaret?
I?
I? Thank you. Sean?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And aye for me as well, so it's unanimous. Okay, we're going to move to the...
Thank you all very much for that. And just to repeat, and I'm only doing this because there was a question about it, this is solely for the purpose of this policy that we are looking at tonight, the grading policy that we've reviewed, that we will disseminate, and I know we have a conference at nine o'clock tomorrow morning with the secondary people to start to enact. So thank you to the board for this, and it's not something I do lightly, and not something I'll be coming back to do again. I don't, I hope.
Thank you, Dr. D. Okay, we're going to move to the consent agenda. Before I open it up for discussion, I want to recommend that we insert the names under E2. I'm going, for the BOSI's positions for board members, I'm going to recommend that we, that we insert Deborah Coats, Eric Schultz, and Douglas Pascarella. Is there any, is there any discussion on, on that before we get to the rest of the consent agenda?
No, I'm good.
No? Everybody's good? Okay, other discussion on the consent agenda? Anyone? No? Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented with E2 inserting the names Douglas Pascarella, Deborah Coats, and Eric Schultz. Can I get a motion to accept the consent agenda as amended?
Motion.
John? John Del Tato makes a motion, a second. Brian Nolan makes, Brian Nolan makes a second. I'll go down the roll call for votes. Joe Zito?
Yes.
John Del Tato?
Yes.
John Steele?
Yes.
Margaret Marchand?
Yes.
Brian Nolan?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, so it's unanimous?
Yes.
John, John votes twice. Okay, so now, that was the consent agenda. Before I entertain a motion to go into executive session, I just want to thank everybody for signing on and working so hard for us in very, very difficult circumstances. And with that, I would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of meeting with a consultant regarding district operations and a matter pertaining to a certain employee. Please note that an executive session is a portion of the school board meeting that is not open to the public. If any action is required to be taken in public session, the Board of Education will act in accordance with the law. May I have a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make it.
Thank you. Brian Nolan makes a motion, second. Margaret Marchand?
Yeah, you can see me?
Yes, I can.
All right.
All in favor? John? Yes, Margaret? Yes? Brian? Yes? Joe?
Yes.
And Sean?
Yes.
Yes, it's unanimous. Thank you, everybody.